If you're in Salt Lake City, you can also watch on YouTube. Or you can click on the agenda and the agenda has a link to WebEx where you'll be able to watch the meeting and also be able to participate in the meeting, meaning that you'll be able to provide comment. WebEx is the only way that you're able to provide comment to us. Or if you go to the side of the very bottom, if you're unable to connect to WebEx, you can always send us an email at planning comments at slc gov dot com. We will have somebody monitoring that email throughout the meeting. So if there's, for some reason, you're unable to communicate with us, if there's some sort of issue, please feel free to send those emails.
Thank you, John. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Salt Lake City Planning Commission Meeting of June 9th, 2021. The meeting will not have an anchor location at the City and County Building. Based on the following determination, I, Brenda Shear, Chair of Planning Commission, hereby determine that conducting public meetings at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. Due to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, social distancing requirements, I find that conducting a meeting at the anchor location constitutes substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. All of our commissioners will be connecting remotely.
John, do you want to record?
I did need a reminder and I did press record, so thanks for the reminder.
John, Crystal showed up. Oh, you already.
We got her. She's here.
We're good to go.
I think we are.
We are good to go. Thank you. So we are going to go ahead and start the meeting with the approval of the minutes for May 26, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes. This is Crystal.
Thank you, Crystal. Who had a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Carolyn. I have a motion from Crystal, a second from Carolyn. We're going to go down the list here. Amy?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
The motion passes simultaneously, unanimously. Okay. Thank you all very much. All right. So we're ready to move on to the report of the Chair and the Vice Chair, and I do not have anything to report. Amy?
Neither do I.
Okay. And we'll move on to the report of the Director. So is that Michaela or John?
I have something to report.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's probably the same thing I was going to say, so go ahead.
No, go ahead. You go ahead first.
Oh, I was just going to mention, the only thing I had is that, you know, we are looking for new planning commissioners. And so I know we sent out an email today asking for people to apply. So if you know anybody in your neighborhood, community, somebody you think would be great, send them our way.
And I would like to add to that. Thank you, John. And you will be contacted by our admin staff because we are at the minimum amount of commissioners at this time. We will get folks, we will get folks on board, but replying to our admins and hopefully being able to attend the meetings without a quorum, we won't be able to have planning commission.
Who's rolling off, Michaela?
Say, thank you. Pardon?
Who's rolling off?
Matt.
It's not any commission.
Matt is technically done. Matt is technically done at the end of the month, but he let us know that he's not going to attend. And I put in a call to Carolyn to hang on. I don't know if you've listened to your voicemail, Carolyn.
I have, but.
Okay, I called you today to discuss hanging on until we get other commissioners on. So that's D1. We have opening in D1, D2, D5, D6, or D7.
Oh, wow. Okay. Wow.
So we're at nine.
Well, we have many openings. So I'm hoping that everybody who is on the line today, all our participants, will consider nominating someone. Can you tell us, Michaela, how people can do that?
Yes, the applications go through the mayor's office. And there's an application form. We're about ready to blast out, if you haven't already seen some blasts out, but there's a form on slc gov dot com, under the mayor's office, Boards and Commissions. And there's a big icon that says, Apply.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda today. So the first thing on the agenda is the Ice House Design Review at approximately 430 West, 300 North. It is PLN PCM 2020-00986. And Nanette will be presenting it today.
Thank you. Marlene, could you let me share my screen?
I can do that for you. Hold on one second.
John. Great. And I have, I've been struggling with some allergies today, so I've been coughing and I'm hoping I can get through this without coughing too much. I apologize in advance. But Salt Lake City has received a request for a design review from Sam Stripling with GFF Architects. They are representing the property owner at this site. The design review is to allow for modifications to the design standards in order to develop the property located at approximately 430 West, 300 North. Planning staff is recommending the planning commission approve the, the design review requested, as staff has found that the proposed development, development meets the intent of the zoning district and the design review standards. The project site consists of approximately 4.8 acres and is presently a single parcel. The applicant previously submitted a preliminary subdivision plat to consolidate the site and split off the parcel that was west of the rail line. The majority of the site has never been developed on and has been used as outdoor storage for some time. It's located in the TSA UCC District, which is the Transit Station area, urban center core district. A TSA scorecard review was submitted earlier this year, and it was found that the project qualifies for administrative approval with 128 points. The site has frontage on 400 and 300 North. Both streets intersect the front runner in Union Pacific Rail Line to the west. 300 North is considered a collector street and 400 North is a local street. As part of the development of the site, a north-south street is proposed as 490 West. The transportation master plan necessitates that this street is a collector street and that it meet the standards of the complete street ordinance by accommodating pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles. The site is also within walking distance of a number of transit options, including bus lines, light rail designated bike lanes, and a front runner station. The proposed Ice House project will include a seven-story stick-on podium-style building that will house 394 residential units. These residential units will include Studio One and Two Bedroom units. The attached garage structure will be located behind the building and access to this garage will be set back from the newly created 490 West Street. While the project, while the project requires modifications through the design review process, it does provide 100% of ground floor uses along both of the street-facing facades. The cover requires 80%. It maintains upper floor window standards of 25% glazing. It maintains durable materials, building materials covering at least 80% of the ground floor and 50% of the upper floors. There's no ground floor stucco included on the facades. It meets the blank wall length maximum of 15 feet and it provides building light and service area screening and setbacks. The applicant is requesting four modifications with the Ice House project. These modifications include the maximum length of a street-facing building facade, the upper floor stucco limitation, building entrance spacing, and the percentage of ground floor glazing. The TSA UCC District Design Standards has a limitation on the length of the street-facing facade of 200 feet. The Ice House project would include a building facade of 334 feet along 300 North and 377 feet along 490 West. The applicant has addressed this increase in facade length by providing 100% active ground floor uses, where 80% is required, a greater number of building entrances than required on the 300 North facade, architectural emphasis on the corner of 300 North and 490 West, and a plaza seating near this corner. It also includes purposeful building articulation, design, and building materials that respond to the curve of 490 West. It includes building setback variation with passive and active green spaces along 490 West. Access to the garage structure is set back from 490 West. Each residential unit along 300 North will include a patio area and yard space to create a semi-private public area. And finally, over 32,000 square feet of proposed open space will be included in the form of rooftop gardens, exterior and interior courtyards, and patio space. There is also the limitation of the percent of stucco, both traditional and EFS, on any street-facing building facade. The Ice House project is proposing, that limitation is 10%. The Ice House project is proposing 10.8% traditional stucco on the upper floors facing 490 West and 36.6% traditional stucco on the upper floors facing 300 North. Additional stucco is constructed, excuse me, traditional stucco is constructed out of Portland cement aggregate and an acrylic-based finish coating. The applicant, the application of stucco on 300 North emphasizes the building form on the street-facing facade. The stucco material is limited to this building form. The ground floor glass standard is also requested to be modified. In the TSA District, it requires 60% of the ground floor facade to be glass. The 300 North facade will include 45% glass, which is approval through an administrative review is the ground floor glass, or the ground floor use is residential. The 490 West facade is proposed to be 38% glass, which requires planning commission approval. Final, the final modification is the building entrance modification that's requested. The TSA District requires a building entrance every 40 feet of the street-facing facade. So a total of nine entrances are required along the 490 West frontage. Due to the setbacks of the building, 10 ground floor building entrances are visible from the street. However, not all of these entrances are directly facing the street and sections of the building exceed the separation maximum of 40 feet. Excuse me. I've circled these areas in yellow on the site plan here that include the three sections on the west side of the building, or the 490 West facade, and one section along 300 North. The facade along 300 North requires five building entrances. The proposed Ice House project will include seven entrances, all visible from the street. Again, one section does not provide a building entrance that the separation requires, and that's on the far east side of the building. So again, planning staff is recommending the planning commission approve the design review request based on the findings discussed in the staff report. It appears that Sam Stripling, who's the applicant, is a. And I believe he has a presentation prepared. And staff will be here for any questions planning commission might have for us.
Thank you, Nanette.
My name is Sam Stripling. I'm architect with GFF on this project. And Nanette, you more or less ran through everything that I was going to talk about. You did an excellent job. Am I able to share my screen? This I don't know. Yep, if not. Nanette covered it. Oh, sorry.
I can allow you to share that screen. Chair, did you want to move into the applicants?
No, I actually don't like, well, I would like to ask the commissioners if they have any questions for staff before we do that. I'm sorry, Mr. Stripling, just hold on a second.
No worries at all.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Nanette? Okay, then. Mr. Stripling, you can go ahead.
Okay.
So I'm passing you the presenter villages now, and you should have just received them.
Okay, I'm actually connected in two places due to the exigencies of having connected at home. Go ahead and start my video. So one of me, one of me is at my house and the other of me is on my computer. As I said, Nanette ran through it fairly comprehensively. We are proposing the Camber Ice House, the seven-story multifamily project just north of Salt Lakes, just north of Salt Lake City. And it is sandwiched in between 400 North and 300 North. And one of the main, one of the main items of this project is the 490 West Road that we are also designing and providing to bridge that connection. And you will connect everything in between fourth west hardware on through and keep that neighborhood feel. A lot of our goals, as Nanette pointed out through the whole thing, is to take what is a fairly sizable building and really break that scale down to give that more of that neighborhood feel, putting as much residential, residential functions on the street so that we've got those eyes on the street, we've got direct engagement, and beefing up the landscaping in those areas so that we've got seating areas, plenty of planting and engagement with the park strip, which on 300 North is quite wide, and really just, just developing the whole area to give it a much more residential and homey feel. And that includes not just the main building, but also the five townhome buildings that we have around the site as well. To her point about building materials, we're using a selection of dark brick at the base. Moving up through the building, we've got a combination of metal panel. So that's a flush-seam metal panel on the corners. And then in the balcony insets, we're using a variably spaced fiber cement panel. On the undersides of the balconies, there'll be a, again, more wood tone. And then we've got vertical sections of wood toned fiber cement to really warm this up. We're trying to make it as tactile and as responsive as possible. We're seeking the variances to the glazing on level one, due to balancing the desires of being able to see out onto the street with people being able to see back in and keeping that in mind and providing people both their privacy but also direct engagement. And we've also put our amenities down at the street as well. So our leasing office is on 490 West and our bike room is actually at the corner of 300 North and 490 West to really activate that. We're not trying to push that activity to the back. Say it's a place where you come up and you meet your friends and they've got their bikes or their, or their skis and you're ready to go. It's right there out front. Broadly speaking, though, I would say the project is of a scale with its neighbors, fourth, fourth west hardware, but that we're, I feel like we're doing more to break this down. No, we're doing more to bring this to the ground and really try to engage with the site. So if anybody has any additional questions, please feel, feel free to ask. I'm pretty excited.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, do we have any questions or especially clarifications?
I, I would like to get a little bit more information on the 490 West side, considering the length of that building, to really understand how you've architecturally broken it up. And I just would like to hear a little bit more from you on that one, that question before us.
Okay. Is there a way that my other profile can share the content on the screen? It would be helpful if I could bring up the site plan. Ah, there we go. Thank you.
You should be able to now.
Fantastic. Okay. So bringing up the site plan, 490 West is the, it's a long, curvy street, and we've designed it with two lanes of traffic and then two full with, or two bike lanes along this as well. And to break that up, we're using the insets of the building. Part of the reason that there's no, we haven't designed, say, through connections or broken the building up with actual alley access is because there's nowhere to go. On one side, we are bound by an existing warehouse building. And then on the other side, we are also bound by an existing warehouse building. The, the goal is to take those major volumes on the corners and in the upper floors, those are residential units, which are gonna just bang up views of downtown, especially the one up on this corner, and orient those the same way throughout the building to really generate that sense of major volume, major volume, major volume, and then deep insets and using the stucco and the other building materials to help each one of those feel, feel as if they are separate buildings on the site so that we're breaking that mass down. It's not just one big wall. And I think, so if you're looking at, say, I think, I believe this is hardware. Hardware and fourth west both have just these vast, vast long walls. They've got a courtyard there. What we're trying to do is give it more, again, of a broken down residential feel. So.
Do you have a street view of the, of the rendering of 490 West so I can get a better view of it?
This will be inside 490 West, looking directly at the leasing office. So that would be the middle volume. The garage entry is beyond that. Then that is the volume, the northernmost, northernmost volume.
Do you have a, just a straight on, looking at 490 West, the length of it?
Yes, I do. It may take me just a second to ensure that I've got it pulled up. Again, the goal, while I'm pulling that up, the goal is to really help these, these emerge. And so it doesn't feel like just one big square wrap of a building. We want this to punctuate the site and give us some opportunities for landscaping for those little parklets that are scattered throughout the front and engage the street. Let's see, there's some earlier renderings, but this, this gets to the, gets to the point as you're entering 490 West and headed towards, headed in.
I was, no, I was wondering if you had, if you had a shot of the length of 490 West so I could, instead of the corners.
There's an elevate, Amy, there's an elevation on page. Oh, gosh, what is it?
Here, I'll pull that up. I have that ready. It would be.
We would like an elevation. I think the elevation is actually divided in our, in our staff report into two pieces because it's so long.
Yes. So this is the overall elevation.
There you go. Is that what you were looking for, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay. Although this would not be a view that you would really.
Well, I mean, I was looking for like, what it would feel like if I was on the ground looking at 490 West, not from the corners, but.
Okay. This is probably the best one that I have available at the moment. Again, this is an earlier rendering, but you, you get the volumes and you can see how it, that's 490 West curving along here.
Yeah, I think, you know, given the fact that, or one of the questions is going beyond 200 feet, having a better visual would be helpful. See if, yeah. All right. Thanks. You can go on.
Thank you. Is there any, any other commissioners have any questions or clarifications at this time before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Any participant may, may ask to speak. The way that you ask to speak is to, on the lower right-hand side of your screen, you will see a very small hand. If you will push that hand button once, then we will know that you would like to speak. So, John, do we?
Sure. Commissioner Shear, did you want to have Marlene show that, that little graphic before the house that shows the hand?
Kind of helpful if we, if we have it handy.
Yeah, Marlene, if you're available, can I make you the presenter and see if you can share page two on that image?
Yeah, I have it up. Just give me the presenter ball, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marlene. So Marlene has highlighted here in the corner, it's a little tiny hand. And I wish that WebEx actually made it a little easier to respond. But if you click that button, and that would be for all public hearings throughout tonight. If you click on that, it'll indicate to us that you would like to speak. If for some reason that doesn't work, as we mentioned, you can always send an email to planning.coments@slcgov.com.
And also, once you have spoken, can, if you push the little button again, then your hand goes down and we know that you are no longer interested in speaking on the rest of the agenda. All right. So, John, do we have folks that we?
We do. We have David Shear. David, you are unmuted. You have two minutes.
Actually, David.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name's David Shear. I'm the Chair of the Capitol Hill Neighborhood Council, within whose boundaries this project is located. The Capitol Hill Neighborhood Council objects to the applicant's request to exceed the upper floor stucco limit. We should be seeking to raise the level of finish of these buildings, not lower it. The existing building across 300 North from the project site has a high proportion of brick on its street facade, and we believe that this project should have at least that level of finish. Buildings like this one will define the appearance of our city for many years. It's worth a little extra investment to make the city more attractive. We would also like to request that the open spaces in the site plan on 490 West be developed as public amenities, not merely planting areas. As the city becomes denser, well-designed public open spaces become increasingly important to provide a livable urban environment. I'd also like to address a few issues that while not within the purview of this review are, I think, important for planning Salt Lake City during this time of intensive construction. As you know, the city and the Capitol neighborhood in particular have seen an enormous number of multifamily projects built over recent years. Our city is becoming denser, which is good from the standpoint of sustainability. But a denser urban environment requires planning that ensures that neighborhoods like Capitol Hill are not harmed in the process. To one extent or another, large multifamily projects impose costs. Economists would call them externalities on the neighborhoods where they're located. Developers reap profits and the city gains tax base, while the surrounding neighborhood suffers from more traffic and reduced on-street parking, mediocre design, and a lack of attention to public space. Traffic and parking are especially important issues in Capitol Hill. Our narrow, steep streets in Marmalade already suffer from cut-through communal traffic from the north. The traffic from a multifamily project, even on an artery like 300 West, induces even more traffic on these streets. The concentration of traffic from parking garage entrances also can create its own problems when turning restrictions are taken into account. This traffic diminishes the walkability and safety of our neighborhood and harms our overall quality of life. These steep, narrow streets are also needed by residents for parking. When a large multifamily project is built nearby with one parking stall per unit or less and no guest parking on-site, residents are displaced by the overflow. In its eager eagerness to please developers, address our, part of our housing shortage and enlarge its tax base, the city should not ignore the harm these projects can do to neighborhoods. The Capitol Hill Neighborhood Council advocates amending the planning criteria for these projects to require the following: A study of the impacts of traffic created by the project on the surrounding neighborhood, performed by a qualified engineering firm, paid for by the developer, and reviewed by the city's transportation division. This study should demonstrate that the surrounding street network can accommodate the additional traffic without undue harm to the quality of the neighborhood. Reviewing and setting parking ratios on a project-by-project basis to take into account the ability of the surrounding neighborhood to absorb overflow parking without undue convenience for residents. to take into account the ability of the surrounding neighborhood to absorb overflow parking without undue convenience for residents. Easy access and adequate public transportation from the project site, especially if the parking ratio is to be less than one car per unit. And finally, a greater proportion of each site devoted to public open space. I recognize that it is not within the scope of this commission to address these issues. However, I hope that city planning officials present will think further about how to allow our city to become denser without harming existing neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shear, it looks like we have at least one more. Barbara Harvath, did you have comments on this project?
No, I did not.
Okay, so Barbara, will you click that hand so that your hand goes down? And just raise the hand when you would like, when when the hearing that you're wanting to speak to is is occurring. Thank you.
Okay, is it down now?
It is, yes.
Okay, great. Sorry.
Thank you, Barbara. Oh, no, not a problem. Thank you.
So do we have any others online, John, or email?
I don't see anyone in the attendee list, and we have not received any emails.
All right, seeing no further desires to speak, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and motion potentially.
I guess I'll. I'll go ahead and start with a comment. You know, I'm usually a pretty harsh critic when it comes to the architecture. And I think, you know, I'm never a huge fan of of non-affordable or seat materials. But I think when you look at a project like this, the you need something to break up the the overall mass. And I think the stucco actually, when done well, is a good material for that. And I think you would imagine this project is an all-brick project. It would be very overwhelming and and just a monster on the street, to be honest. So I think that the massing is broken down very cleanly and very well, especially with the curving of the street. I think the elevation is very deceiving on the massing of this project. And I think when we develop these very large lots that we are, you know, we have in our city, it's important to think of the architecture and to use the massing in a creative way to break down those masses. And I feel like this was a successful attempt at that. So that's kind of my my two cents.
Thanks, John. Anyone else would like to comment? I'm also interested in the the we have fairly large ground floor spaces here and wanting to know if those will become public amenities, little parks, whether they will be shut off from shut off. So I'm gonna ask that of the of the advocate.
The intent of the amenity spaces on the interior, those are primarily for the tenants. But the exterior spaces, so for instance, the parklet that is directly off of 490 West as you turn in between the leasing office and the bike room, that's provided for public seating. We've landscaped that and for public access. Similarly, we are providing a public area outside of the bike, outside of the bike storage on 300 North at the corner there as well. So all that that's open to anybody who's walking by. There there won't be fence or access control or anything along those lines.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any other comments or concerns? I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Thank you, Abby.
Based on the information and the staff report and the input received during the public hearing, I move that the Planning Commission approve the design review as presented in petition PLN PCM 2020 dash 00986 with the following conditions. One, the design of the project shall be consistent with the staff report and submitted design review application. And two, any changes to the site shall comply with all standards required by city departments.
I'll second.
Thank you, John. I have a motion by Adrian and a second by John. So we're gonna go down the list now. Amy?
No.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Agree.
John?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next agenda item. The next item on the agenda is the zoning map amendment at approximately 835 South Redwood Road and 1668 West Indiana Avenue. It is case number PLN PCM 2021 dash 00249. It is going to be presented by David Geller.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. You noted the application numbers. I won't repeat that. I will start my presentation chair into the screen. You noted it was for a rezone, so a moment here. All right, are you seeing that? And is it large enough?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. So this is a zoning map amendment for two parcels by Redwood Road and Indiana Avenue. The parcel numbers are 1668 West Indiana and 835 South Redwood. Corner property 1668, 1668 is the corner property that has frontage on both Redwood and Indiana. And the other one is to the north of that. Total of the two parcels is about 12,200 square feet. One property is vacant and one contains a single-family dwelling. It's currently zoned R1 5000. The requested change is to RMU residential mixed-use zone with a 45-foot height limit. The idea, conceptual idea is to consolidate the parcels and build some kind of mixed-use development. There's some conceptual drawings, but no specific site development plan. I'm putting a map up to kind of put it in context. The two parcels are here noted on the map on Indiana. And then the other one that's addressed off of Redwood. The other corners of the intersection are zone CC corridor commercial. This is a corner that hasn't been zoned that way. And it abuts against R1 5000, single-family residential. A little bit of an aerial view to give you an idea. The other corners of Redwood are are more commercial slash light industrial kind of uses. And then this is, again, one existing single-family dwelling and a vacant property. Some pictures of it. I'll scroll through these rather quickly. This is the existing house at 1668 West Indiana. And looking towards the corner of Redwood, looking west on Indiana. And then this is the vacant property at 835 South Redwood, looking towards that other property that contains a single-family dwelling. And then there is an alley that's still functional between the property at 835 and the single-family residential uses to the north. Key considerations and staff analysis for this proposal was we looked at neighborhood and citywide master plans, the compatibility with the change with adjacent properties, housing mitigation loss, and consideration of alternate zoning districts. So in terms of the community and citywide master plans, the location here is, this is the map from the West Side Master Plan of 2014. And this is the location was identified as a community node with a variety of uses, including retail and residential was a desirable feature for this area of the community. So there is not a corresponding master plan amendment with this proposal as the property already meets the West Side Master Plan for this area. We also looked at Plan Salt Lake and other applicable city plans. And the proposal was in line with those kind of perceived changes over time and additional housing and other things. Well, sorry. Another thing we looked at was the compatibility with neighboring properties. The RMU 45 zone would allow a building up to 45 feet height in height because the property is but single-family residential. In the RMU zones, there is usually a process to go taller. When it abuts single or two-family residential, it is strictly limited to 45 feet in height. And there is no mechanism or process to exceed that. The other corners of the intersection being zone CC have a height limit of 30 feet by right and could go to 45 feet through the design review process. So this being this northeast corner being 45 feet would be in line with the potential development of the area of other properties were redeveloped on the other intersection corners. The purpose of this diagram was also to illustrate that when it abuts single-family residential, there is a 10-foot landscaping buffer required. And then in the case of this particular property, there might be some different configurations depending if the front yard was to be considered Indiana or Redwood. In any case, if the front was on red yard, Redwood, sorry, the front yard was on Redwood Road, the rear yard, based on the property depth, would be about 25, 21 to 25 feet with a 10-foot landscape buffer required before the neighboring property to the east. If the front of the project would be addressed off of Indiana, this becomes a side yard and there's a 10-foot side yard requirement plus one foot above anything being built above 30 feet, an additional one foot of setback for anything above 30 feet for multifamily and mixed uses. So you would end up with about a 25-foot side yard to the neighboring property and a 10-foot landscape buffer. Staff found, looking at the the factors that we consider for a zoning map amendment, that the proposal generally complied with those factors. And we're recommending that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation recommendation to City Council from that change from R1 5000 to RMU 45.
Thank you, David. Question for you. There, since there is an alley there, does that affect the side yard setback or backyard setback?
No.
Properties?
There would still be an applicable side yard setback. But we know that an alley on this side, depending where the building were situated, there would still be that 10-foot side yard setback plus an additional one foot for anything above 45. And then the alley naturally provides some buffering on that north side.
Right, but it would not count as part of the setback. The alley would not.
Would not count as part of their setback. It would be in addition to.
Okay, thank you. That's my question. Does anyone else have any questions for David at this time?
Yeah, David, could you clarify, did you say setback or step back? If the front of this building were on Indiana?
If the front were on Indiana, this, sorry, the setback from the side property line increases one by one foot every foot above 30 feet. The building, however, after after up to 30 feet or after the 30 feet could be stepped back rather than pulling the whole building back, those upper floors or that elevation above 30 feet could be stepped back.
So we would get a step back as well as a setback of potentially 25, 25 feet.
Well, at the at the ground level.
Yeah, the ground.
10-foot, but after 30 feet, there would have to be the step back.
So the buffer zone would only be 10 feet on the east side.
At the ground level, yes.
Yeah. I have a real problem with that because the that's too close to the house on the east side. I'm I'm really concerned about its relationship to the houses on the east. And a 10-foot setback is totally inadequate to me. That's just my comment here.
All right. Thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes. Hi, my name is Kim Tran.
Yes.
So like David, he present everything to to your committee. So the reason we would like to rezoning to IMU 45, I think it's a lot better than we put like a single, a single family home there. So if we put the like kind of business below and residential above, you know, it print up like more income for me and make and also create a better to the city, to contribute to the city. Look at the area will be a nicer. And so that that why I think I think that we should I propose to rezoning to IMU 45.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up a public hearing. If you would like to speak, please click on the little hand in the corner there of your your little raise hand button. Do we have anybody who wants to speak, John?
Commissioner, I don't see anybody who's indicated they'd like to speak on this item. And I do not see any emails that have come through this evening.
Thank you. I also note that we do not have any comments that have been given to us through a letter to our package as well. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for a motion or discussion.
Yeah, I feel like if this if this project had an actual, you know, if we were also looking at the actual design that could guarantee that we would have a the front of the building would be on Redwood, I would be more than happy to support it. But given the fact that we could have a 10-foot buffer to those houses on the north or the east, I'm not in support of this tonight.
I feel like that's mitigated a little bit by the fact that there's an alley there. And that alley provides at least another 10 feet.
That's to the to the north. I'm talking about the houses to the east.
This is this is to the east. The alley is on the east.
Alley is off of Redwood Road, so it would be to the north. It's the north.
David?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Very sorry.
Yeah.
The way the plan is shown, it looks like the alley is to the east where they've got the conceptual drawing.
Oh, yeah, I was I kind of Googled it, so I could see where it was. But yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, the alley is to the north, and I'm concerned about the houses to the east. I'm not against this reason. I think that's a better use of the corner. I just with the unknown of what the project would actually look like, I can't support it.
Sorry, if I may add, I'm speaking on behalf of my father. We do have a couple of mock-up designs ready, if we are allowed to, you know, screen share and show you guys. If you guys have any concerns or questions.
Well, Mr. Tran, I thank you for that, but. Well, Mr. Tran, I, um, thank you for that, but, um, unfortunately, um, this is a rezoning request. And the designs are, will not be become part of it. So we can recommend to city council that they, uh, wait to approve it until we have a design. Or you can withdraw it and bring it back when you have a design. Uh, but, um, I would not recommend that based on the fact that it takes a very long time for zoning requests to get changed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So commissioners, what is your?
What was the height again, the maximum height? Forty-five feet?
Forty-five feet is the maximum height of forty-five zone.
And if they wanted to go higher, they could do so through.
They cannot go higher because it's a residential area.
So not even through the plan development or?
No, there's, there's, sorry.
No way to go higher to come before us to require that we could have a, a larger setback. It was above.
No, there's, there's no process or mechanism to go above forty-five on this.
Okay.
But if it does go above thirty, let me just make, if it goes above thirty, it has to step back, is that correct?
Either the whole building would have to be pulled back on the side yard. Or the upper floors would have to be stepped back to meet that additional height above thirty feet. The one foot per every foot above.
And what's the current height max in the underlying zoning?
R one five, maybe it's about twenty-eight.
So right now, they could build a twenty-eight foot building, just per zoning.
I'm double checking, but I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it says. That's what your staff report says.
And I, I guess I understand the concern that Amy's articulating. But given that anything. Over thirty feet, which is essentially what they could build by right now, would have to be set back. I think that mitigates the impact on the adjacent property. So I think I, I'm still in favor.
Okay. Would anyone like to, um, make a motion?
And I will, happy to do that once I get the motion sheet.
Anyone else want to weigh in before Adrian makes a motion? Go ahead, Adrian.
Okay. Based on the findings and analysis and the staff report, testimony and discussion at the public hearing. I mean, that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the proposed zoning map amendment by PLN PCM twenty-twenty-one. Dash zero zero two four nine for the properties located at eight thirty-five South Redwood Road. And eleven sixty-eight West Indiana Avenue respectively. Proposed own change from the R one five thousand, single-family residential zoning district. To the RMU forty-five residential mixed-use zoning district.
Have a motion by Adrian, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, John. Promotion by Adrian and second by John. Um, so Amy.
No.
Adrian.
Yes.
Carolyn.
Agree.
John.
Yes.
Crystal.
No.
Okay, we have three in favor and two against and the project.
Actually, Madam, Madam Chair, um, when we have six members of the commission, we need to have a majority. Uh, vote to, to pass the vote. So, uh, this is where you have an opportunity to vote, to either put it over the top or to essentially tie it.
Right, I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes. So that makes it four to two.
Thank you.
And the motion passes, thank you, John, for letting me have a vote. Okay, so we are going, moving on to, um. Item number three in our agenda, which is the plan and development of preliminary plat, plat at approximately. And eighteen fifty-two east twenty-seven, um, this is PLN PCM twenty-twenty dash zero zero eight two six. And PLN SUB twenty-twenty zero zero one one one. Um, and it is being presented by Chris Earl.
Good evening, commissioners, um, I would like to start off by saying that I am a little sick. So, um, I will try not to cough, but if I do, I apologize ahead of time. Um, let me go ahead and share.
At least we won't catch it.
Yeah, that's true.
This is why we're virtual, everyone.
Yeah, that's right.
Can everybody see that?
Have to be. Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, um, so this is the Harvath Plan Development and Preliminary Plat. Um, this is a request by David and Barbara Harvath, property owners for plan development and preliminary plat approval. To subdivide two lots at eighteen forty-four east, twenty-seven hundred south and eighteen fifty-two east, twenty-seven hundred south. And create a third lot in the rear portion of eighteen fifty-two east, twenty-seven hundred south. The newly, excuse me, the newly created lot will facilitate a new single-family residence. Uh, the request would result in three lots, uh, that do not meet minimum lot width requirements. But would meet the minimum lot size as required in the R one twelve thousand, single-family residential zoning district. Lot one would have a reduced lot width from eighty feet to sixty-seven point three feet. Lot two would be reduced from eighty feet to sixty-eight, excuse me, sixty-eight point seven feet. And lot three would be proposed to have a lot width of twenty-four feet. All three lots would maintain a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet as required by the R one twelve thousand zoning district. The proposal requires preliminary plat or preliminary sub, subdivision approval. To modify the existing two lots and to create. An additional lot, um, making three lots in total. This is normally an administrative process that can be approved by planning staff. But because the application is tied to the plan development, the subdivision is being taken to the planning commission for joint approval. Um, the subject properties are located along the south side of twenty-seven hundred south. Between Melbourne Street and two thousand east in the Sugar House area. The properties in the surrounding area are zoned primarily for residential or commercial uses. The north, um, to the north, the properties are zoned, R one seven thousand, single-family residential. Properties to the east and the south are zoned, R one twelve thousand, single-family residential. And to the west, properties are zoned, R one twelve thousand and R one seven thousand, single-family residential. Excuse me, here are some site photos. The top photo shows the property located at eighteen forty-four east, twenty-seven hundred south. And the top right photo shows the property located at eighteen fifty-two east, twenty-seven hundred south. The bottom photo show views looking east and west along twenty-seven hundred south. Um, here are some site photos, the top left photo shows a property locate, or sorry, these are more site photos. The top photo is a view from the shared driveway looking into the property. And the top right is a view of the shared driveway looking towards twenty-seven hundred south. The bottom two photos show approximately where lot three will be located. Um, these are the key issues that were considered when reviewing this request. The first issue is reduced lot widths. Um, lot one would be reduced from eighty feet to sixty-seven point three feet. Lot two would be reduced from eighty feet to sixty-eight point seven feet. And lot three is proposed at a width of twenty-four feet. While the proposal doesn't meet current lot width standards, visually, there will be little modification to the current properties. The majority of modification will, will occur to the rear of the property behind the house on eighteen fifty-two east. Which will help in maintaining the existing visual appeal of single-family homes along the front edge of twenty-seven hundred south. Um, the second issue considered as driveway location and parking. The proposal would utilize the existing driveway and drive entrance, only modifying the width. By utilizing the current layout of the properties, it will minimize the visual disturbance as seen from twenty-seven hundred south. In order to maintain the same neighborhood character, the driveway will serve as. Access to the existing off-street parking for lots one and two. It is proposed that lot three will also have off-street parking by way of an attached garage. Um, required off-street parking is being proposed for all three lots. The third, the third issue that was considered in the review is the single-family home design on lot three. Excuse me, official development plans for the proposed house on lot three have not been submitted at this time. But the provided narrative discuss. Excuse me, sorry, um, discusses the proposed design of the home. Stating it will meet all R one twelve thousand zoning requirements, including setbacks, height and lot coverage. In addition to meeting all zoning standards, a condition of approval requires the dwelling. On lot three to also adhere to the front facade control sections. Or front facade controls in section twenty-one A, twenty-four dot zero one zero dot I of the zoning ordinance. The application describes the proposed building materials as stucco fiber cement siding and glass with brick. Or stone accents in the project narrative. Um, the third issue. Or, sorry, the fourth issue, um, that was considered was compliance with citywide and community master plans. The subject property lies within the Sugar House Master Plan area. The request lies with policy, aligns with policies of this plan relating to increasing housing stock and infill development. Um, this proposal will also help meet the goals found in Plan Salt Lake and growing SLC. Which aims to promote, promote infill and redevelopment of underutilized land. Addresses lack of housing options in Salt Lake City and attempts to preserve and enhance neighborhood and district character. Um, the subject properties within the boundaries of Salt Lake or boundaries of the Sugar House Community Council. Early notification was sent to the Sugar House Community Council Chair. Um, requesting comments for the proposal. The applicant, as well as planning staff, were invited to attend a community council meeting where the project was discussed. Early notice was sent out to the property owners and residents within three hundred feet of the subject area. As of the publication of the staff report, two comments were received in favor of the proposal and twelve were received in opposition. Staff is recommending that the commission approve the plan development and preliminary plat with the conditions listed in the staff report. And I believe the, um, applicant is here, um, to present.
Thank you, Chris, I hope you, uh, recover soon.
I'm trying.
Yes, um, before we, uh, allow the applicant to speak, is there any questions for Chris? I do have one question, when you say it's twenty-four feet wide, it's actually like sixty-eight. Third, the one is actually sixty-eight feet wide at the rear where it, where the actual built, uh, building will be, right? It's just twenty-four feet wide on the street.
Yeah, it's just the frontage that is twenty-four feet, um, essentially the access strip. Um, and then the lot will widen out when you go down the access strip.
Thank you, that was a little confusing. Anyone else have questions or clarifications for Chris before he croaks?
Chris, are you seeing more applications like this? Or is this sort of a one-off? I'm just curious.
Um, this is the first one that I've seen, um, but. Given kind of the, the nature of a lot of these lots, um, one thing to kind of keep in mind is. Even though the, the lots in this, um, particular area are zoned R one twelve thousand. The lots are actually about a half acre, so you're about twenty-one.
Yeah, they're really long lots, so.
Yeah, they're, they're fairly large, so, um. I, like I said, I haven't seen any other ones come in, but, um, I don't know if it's something that. Um, other people may want to try, um, I just don't know at this point.
Okay, I was just curious, thanks for that.
Okay, does anyone else have any more questions for Chris? And the applicant is here, uh, is that, um, Barbara?
Uh, Barbara Harvath is the applicant and I represent her, I'm Victoria.
Thank you, Victoria, please go ahead.
Yeah, and Barbara Harvath is participating, so if she wants to say anything. Um, I guess I need one little point of clarification, do you guys allow the applicant to speak after the public hearing or just before the public hearing?
We will allow, uh, the applicant to, uh, answer questions that we, that we think are important. Coming out of the public hearing.
Well, we'll be happy to do that, thank you so much for your service to the community. I realize that planning commission meetings last a long time, I've attended many and I, I love the process. But, uh, we really appreciate the time that you spend and the time that staff has spent on this. Uh, Chris has done a wonderful job helping us, this is a very small project. And it is just one request, it's come in as a PD. Because virtually no one can meet the requirements that you have in your code for a, uh, a staff. To create, uh, a lot in the back unless you go through the PD process. So we're, we're complying with your PD process and asking and requesting respectfully. Uh, approval of the PD and the preliminary plat, we're only requesting one variation for the zone. And that is for lot width, the lot width requirement requires eighty feet of street-facing lot width. So we're requesting a reduction for all three of the lots to sixty-seven feet wide, sixty-eight feet wide. And then the staff is actually the front or considered the front under your code for the, for the lot in the back, which you are correct. I'm sure is, uh, sixty, uh, sixty-seven feet wide in the back in the front. So these are our twelve thousand square foot lots. However, Barbara's lot, she's lived there for over fifteen years, it faces twenty-seven hundred south. The, the street view will remain the same, the driveway that's going to service the back lot is already in existence. And that will be the same street view that the neighbors will see and that people on the street will see. Um, Barbara's lot currently exceeds even the maximum lot size allowed in the zone. It's over nineteen thousand square feet. And so this has, uh, her, her brother's family lives next door, David. And he is participating in the request for the PD. If you look at the staff reports at attachments E, F, and G. I want to point out that the project complies with everything it's required to comply with, except the variation of the front lot width. Uh, it also promotes Barbara's, uh, request to age in place. She currently lives in the house at eighteen forty-four and she would like to move to the back house. Which will be built as more, uh, aging in place friendly than the three-story house in the front. Which has a top story, a, a main level and then a basement. Um, it promotes retaining the look of the single-family homes. And we are retaining the two nineteen thirties, uh, family homes that face twenty-seven hundred south. It is still low-density residential, we are not requesting any sort of variation from the zoning lot size. zoning lot size, which is twelve thousand square feet. I know some of the neighbors indicate that these are half-acre lots, but that is not in keeping with the zoning, which is twelve thousand square feet, not two twenty thousand square feet. Many neighbors say that this will change the character of the neighborhood. And Barbara intends to still live in the neighborhood, as does my brother. Barbara lives with her aging mother who's eighty-four and her brother, her other brother. And they intend to move to the back lot. And retain the nineteen thirties houses along the street. One of the neighbors indicated that they thought we were going to put a house facing twenty seven hundreds south on a twenty-four-foot-wide lot. And that is not the case, that the house would be in the back. So just to alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors. This is a very small, very low-impact infill request to utilize the space in the back of very large, long, deep lots. The houses do face a busy street, so that that back house will have privacy. It will have its own parking. It meets the policy concerns and goals of the PD and also of the Sugar House Plan and the Salt Lake City Plans. Which request that we add appropriate infill products and appropriate infill projects. But keep the existing housing stock. And develop underutilized land with aging in place. Implementation and implementing zoning flexibility to allow for that. The buildable area on the lots will keep the open space that's appropriate in the zone. Barbara Harvath planted all the fruit trees that are mentioned in the neighbors letters in opposition to this project. She planted all those fruit trees. She waters them with culinary water. Which is not ideal, but that's all she has. There are no water rights in this area to be purchased at this time. No impact will be made to the existing easement at the back for the water ditch that a neighbor built on Barbara's land. That will remain because there is an easement there. I don't know if the water, the water district permitted them to build that ditch. I I don't understand the background of that, but that will remain and we will have no impact on that. In order to address the concerns of the neighbors. We will come in with an appropriate house design. I'd like to share my screen, but I think you have to give me permission to do that.
I can do that for you.
Let's let's not do that at this time, John. We are about out of time, Ms. Hale, so for the for the applicant's presentation. So if there's anything you want to say before we kind of wrap it up. We'll be able to come back if if there.
You're breaking up. I'm sorry.
We will be able to come back if there are if there are questions that arise out of our public hearing.
Okay, I would like to just sum up by saying that we we want to address the concerns of the neighbor. Barbara will reduce the house in the back to a single story above ground. And we request this appropriate infill for this area. There are no added homes, except for one additional home, as was feared. No commercial at all is being requested, as was feared. No second story. She will reduce it to one. No reduction in lot size and no ruination of the flora and fauna that Barbara planted there. She intends to keep as much as she can. And we would request approval. And respectfully request that she also not have to remove her detached garage, which she stores a lot of her stuff in.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? For the staff? If not, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And if you would like to speak at the public hearing, please raise your hand. I do see that we have at least one community council represented. So, John?
Sure, it looks like we have Judy Short from the Sugar House Community Council. Judy, would you like to speak?
I would.
All right.
You don't have five minutes.
Thank you. We at the we had an opportunity to review this project at our land use committee in March. And we flyer the neighborhood. And one of the neighbors told us we missed the other two streets, so we went back and refly it. So the entire fifty-five homes were notified of this proposed development. It complies with the purpose statement of the R one twelve thousand zone. And it benefits the city by adding one more additional unit of housing to the city. Does this benefit the neighborhood? Does this make a more enhanced product than how the neighborhood is now? It's consistent with the master plan because it still retains the designation low-density residential. And I think now we've learned a little bit about the design of the house that it no longer will plan to be a two-story house. So, we're pleased with that. This this fits the city's goal of adding more housing so more people can fit in. And it would allow people to stay in their home or neighborhood, which is another city goal. But we're not sure that this really benefits the neighborhood as a whole. Recently, the city added the accessory dwelling unit zone. And this parcel, this zone, the R one twelve thousand was excluded. And I'm sure that was done for a reason. So I'm not sure that this is a good way to subvert that reason. We've already heard of at least one other person planning the same thing. The subdivision has fifty-five lots. Many homes are old, some in better repair than others. I received seventeen written comments. Fifteen are opposed to this change and two are in favor. Most of the people writing comments have lived in their house for many years. I'm talking thirty and forty years. This is not a neighborhood that experiences much turnover. As we look at the lot from the sky via the city assessor's website. It's obvious that some seem to have collected junk, like extra automobiles and trailers, even a semi-trailer. But the majority of homes seem to have a nice garden in the rear parcel. There is one that appears to be a very stark modern home with white stucco and and windows. Most of these are very traditional homes. We don't understand how a handicapped person would need a three-car garage. These parcels do not meet the lot width requirement of eighty feet. And twenty-four feet seems ridiculous. Approving this PUD would erode the development pattern of this area. Even though adding housing is important to the city. We'd rather see a small area plan developed for Highland Acres that says the vast majority of the neighborhoods in favor of this. Than allow one PUD in the middle of this cohesive community. It feels like spot zoning, and we ask that you deny the request.
Thank you, Judy. Would anyone else like to? Do we have others, John?
Yep, it looks like we have Laurie Paulson. Laurie, would you like to speak?
Yes, I have been a longtime resident of Highland Acres. And I wanted to kind of give a little light on the zoning that we have right now. In nineteen ninety-seven, another property owner in the Highland Acres subdivision wanted to subdivide their lot and create a flag lot. Many of the neighbors and I oppose that project because we like the charm of our neighborhood, especially the large lots. We did not want to lose our access to those who had irrigation water to lose that access, and we wanted to minimize driveway hazards for children who walked to Highland Park Elementary. Previous to that time, the area was zoned R one seven thousand. Since the majority of property owners in the Highland Acres subdivision wanted to preserve our area with large lots, and we did not want any flag lots. We worked with the city to create zoning ordinances. And the ordinance we got is the one that we currently have, the R one twelve thousand. For this area with the stipulation that the property had to have at least eighty feet of street frontage to prevent any possibility of subdivision. The zoning amendment was approved on October seventh nineteen ninety-seven. At that time, it never crossed my mind, nor the city planner, nor anyone else's, that a family would buy adjacent lots with what appears to be the express purpose of creating a flag lot. And I want to assure you that if we had considered that that situation at the time, we would have lobbied for an even bigger lot size in our zoning. Twenty-four years later, meaning today, many property owners still hold the same view that we held in nineteen ninety-seven. And we want large lots. With a brief review of the Highland Acres as is with a brief review of why Highland Acres is owned as it is today. I want to ask the planning commission to consider the intent of the current zoning regulation and not just the letter of the law. Zoning laws are in place to protect neighborhoods. And granting one exception will ultimately lead to another. If that happens, this neighborhood will lose its integrity. Property values may be negatively impacted. And obviously, neighbors will be very unhappy. Thank you.
Thank you. For your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? We did, I will note that we did receive a number of letters forwarded to us through the neighborhood council, but also directly. That are in our packet, so we have read those letters.
Commissioners here, we did receive one email during the meeting that I can read aloud for you.
Thank you.
And this is from Porter Donahue. The email says this application violates not only the zoning requirements for three lots. But also the adopted policies and restrictions. The application incorrectly identifies detached garages. These functioning as dwellings and the applicant David has conveniently canceled inspection by Angela on several occasions as related to me by Angela. The application thus provides non-factual false information, which has corrupted the entire process. In fact, in being a corrupt application, this application is wasted the taxpayers' time and taxpayers' dollars. When speaking with Chris Earl. He told me the garages can have plumbing. The apples can put garage doors on the garage, which has had its garage doors covered over. I disagree with the city acting as an advocate for the applicants. City must act as an advocate and servant to the citizenry. I would like to know of any and all conflicts of interest involving the commissioners. I move this application be denied due to false information being provided on the application. Not to mention the absent enforcement input. There are no structures in the proportions of these lots. That's all that we have.
Thank you. So if there are no further comments from the public, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration. For discussion.
I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant, any comments in response to the issues raised during the public hearing. If there are any that she wants to address.
Go ahead, Ms. Hale.
Yes, I would like to address the Sugar House concerns. Barbara has reduced the height of the proposed house to one story above ground. The reason she would like to have a three-car garage is because there are three adults who live in the house, her brother, herself, and her mother, all of whom currently have cars. She is not requesting that she change the nature of the neighborhood. She is not requesting that she tear down the two houses and put in six planned unit developments. Like has happened up on Twentieth East. She is merely requesting that one additional family live in the neighborhood. It's a vibrant community. Barbara has lived there in that neighborhood, not just on twenty seven hundred south for decades, but also in the neighborhood right behind there. So she is also a good friend. She wants one more family member, one more family living there, kids to go to school. A friend to be a neighborhood friend or go to a church meeting with others or a community meeting with others. I am uncertain about the flag lot concern. The reason the flag lots don't work in this case is because your zoning regulations are hard to comply with, and that's why we've requested it in a PD. And it is underutilized land. And one additional family or neighbor would enhance the neighborhood, not destroy it. The look from the street will be exactly the same as it is now.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other comments or concerns? I do want to acknowledge the concerns of the neighborhood in this proposal. And I think that the city planner here, the staff person has done his best job to recommend approval based on the actual conditions of that are he's required to review in the in the application for the application. So and I also want to acknowledge that although things were developed in nineteen ninety-seven. We are, we are in a kind of a different situation now in the city where housing has become a much more important need than it perhaps was at that time. Do the commissioners have any other things that they would like to say before we vote on this matter?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I can imagine a lot of scenarios where you would actually have a negative impact to the to the neighborhood that are not being proposed here. And I always find it so interesting how whenever we have an ADU, everyone complains, there's not enough parking, there's not enough off-street parking, and here we have somebody who wants to have enough off-street parking, and then they complain about that. So I don't know quite where there's a happy medium. Parking, but you know, to me, looking around the the Google Earth of the areas with these long lots, it's not a huge amount in that neighborhood, and I don't live far from it. The majority of homes surrounding this block don't have these long lots. So I feel like this is not going to have an impact to the neighborhood in any way that they're expressing, but I can sure imagine many scenarios that they could do by right. That would result in in a not pleasing effect. So I think this is a good project.
Thank you, Amy.
I just have a question for staff because it seems like it should be much easier ADU. What what's the reasoning behind not allowing those in the zone?
The reason for doing a plan development instead of a ADU?
Yeah, why aren't they allowed? Why aren't we allowed to have ADUs? Is there a specific reason for this neighborhood not to have that?
So our, the R one twelve thousand zone does allow ADUs.
Does or does not?
It does.
It does, commissioners. I I did hear that comment from the Sugar House Community Council Chair, but we do allow them as conditional use in all R one zones, including R one twelve thousand.
That's what I thought. That's why I was just trying to clarify that because it didn't seem like it. I guess, why why are we doing it this way versus an ADU? Because it seems.
Well, I imagine, I imagine they want a bigger house.
Yeah, if they don't want to comply with the restrictions under the ADU ordinance in terms of where you can put windows and size and all of that.
Or 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 ownership of the property.
Or the ownership requirement too.
Yeah, you can sell the property perhaps.
Yeah, I just was getting at that you can have a two-story ADU and a lot of these things are kind of moot at this point, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with everything that's been said, and I think the impact of this particular proposal will be minimal. I appreciate that the preserving the house. Will be minimal. Um, I appreciate that the preserving the houses in the front and that the view from the streetscape won't be affected. Um, and I see adding one additional house in the rear of one of these really long lots. As a, an effective way to deal with uh, an aging in place housing circumstance. So I'm, I'm in support.
Thank you. Um, would anyone like to make a motion? Amy?
Let me pull it out. I'm right there.
I can do, I have it in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, starting a pattern.
Thanks on the findings listed in the staff report, the information presented and the input received during the public hearing. I move that the planning commission approve the plan development petition PLN PCM 2020-0086. And preliminary subdivision PLN SUB 2021-00111 as proposed, subject to complying with the conditions listed in the staff report.
I will second it.
I have a motion.
Can I ask for?
Ms. Hales, I'm sorry, you're out of order.
Okay, sorry.
Um. I'm sorry, I apologize, but we really, this was the point where we're gonna vote, so. I think you'll be happy with the conclusions, so I don't think you want to interfere at this point. So um. So I have a motion from Adrian and a second from. I'm sorry, is that?
Amy.
Sorry?
Amy.
Sorry, and a second from Amy. Um, so Amy?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Agree.
John?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And the motion passes five to zero. Thank you all for coming and thank you for your interest. Okay, and we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is item number four. The Lake Street ADU at approximately 927 South Lake Street. It is PLN PCM 2021-00192 and it's being presented by Kelsey Lindquist.
Good evening commissioners, I will just pull up a quick presentation. All right, this is. Just one moment. A request from Dave Brock, the owner representative for a conditional use. Approval for an internal ADU located within a new single-family dwelling at 927 South Lake Street. The subject property is located within the R1 5,000 zoning district where ADUs require conditional use approval. The proposed ADU will be located within the basement of the subject property and will be approximately 1,170 square feet in size. The primary entrance to the ADU is a stairwell indicated by the black arrow in the lower corner. And the parking will be accommodated on Lake Street indicated by the red arrow. Are the elevations of the new single-family dwelling, the west, which is the primary elevation, and then the east, which is the rear. The ADU entrance indicated on the southern elevation and then the northern elevation. And then a site photograph of the existing single-family home. And in summary, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the requested conditional use for the internal ADU. That was quick. I can answer any questions at this time regarding this project.
Kelly, I have a question for you. Is the existing garage remaining?
They are proposing a new detached garage access off of the alley. Oh, actually, it's existing garage to remain. It's not a new garage. So the existing garage will remain access off of the alley.
Off of the alley.
Three of the staff report.
Yeah, I was looking at page three, but I wasn't sure if it was remaining. Oh, there it goes. I just have to like, make it really big.
I do too.
On the uh, north uh, side of the garage. Is there space there? Because it looks, you know, wide enough. Is there space there for an off-street parking? Still, from the alley?
It's pretty tough. It's only seven feet wide. Between the edge of the garage and the property line.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to speak?
The applicant has a colleague representing the project this evening. Um, Matthew. Or Michael, I apologize. Michael Lawler.
Okay, yeah, Kelsey, I can add Michael Lawler as a panelist. I was looking for Dave and I didn't see him, so.
Yeah.
So Michael should be a panelist now and is able to participate.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawler. You're muted. Um, John, can we unmute him? There we go. You're now, you're now unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for presenting the project, Kelsey. Um, I'm just sitting in for Dave Brock who was called away uh, at the last minute, so. Um, I think I'll just defer to, to Kelsey's uh, description.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, commissioners, are there any questions before we go to the public hearing? If not, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please push the little. Raise hand button in the bottom right. Of your screen. Of your window.
Commissioners, I don't see anybody that's indicated on the attendee list they'd like to speak. Um, just as a reminder to people, you can always send an email to planning dot com and at slcgov dot com. Um, I did receive one email this evening that I can read aloud if you'd like.
Yes, please.
All right, this is from Karen. Um, Karen says that my biggest concern is parking. I park in back of my home utilizing the alley, but Lake Street is how I access the alley and major roads. Is regularly too congested to pass another car and traffic jams where cars are left trying to back. Up into night south traffic or beyond Belmont occur regularly. I'm also surrounded by rentals and lawful multi-unit homes and have been for over 20 years. Parking has become a major nuisance. I cannot uh, downsize my garbage can because I'm lucky to find space for it. Once every couple of months and even then is regularly removed from the street so someone can park or rammed into the middle of the street. Every adult comes with at least one vehicle and often two. Single adults often come with romantic partners and an extra vehicle. The reality around here is at least two parking spaces being used for every adult renting. Or permanently residing. Any conditional use would have to provide at least six off-street parking spaces. This is also the type of property we were told would not be considered for an ADU due to the lot size when they were first proposed. I'm disappointed the lot sizes are not being considered now and believe this will negatively impact the neighborhood.
John, what is the person's last name?
Um, I don't have it, but I can send this email and have it put in Dropbox.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. It's fine. I just need it for the record. Um, okay, uh, I don't see any other hands up at this time, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And bring it back to the commissioners for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Alrighty. Based on the information in the staff report, the information presented and the input received during the public hearing. I move that the planning commission approve petition PLN PCM 2021-00192.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who is that? Sorry.
Adrian.
Oh, Adrian, sorry, thank you, Adrian. Okay, I have a motion by Carolyn, second by Adrian. Amy?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Agree.
John?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Okay, we have uh, five, the motion passes five to zero. Thank you all very much. We have um, number five on our agenda tonight is the King unit legalization at approximately 40, 42 and 44.
Madam Chair, can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, in fact, that's an excellent idea, Madam Vice Chair. So we will take a five-minute break. We will be back at seven, we'll actually take an eight-minute break. We'll be back at 7:20. Okay, everybody? Thank you all.
I'm back.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Crystal, are you back? We'll wait one second for Crystal. We have to have every single person work for them. Crystal, are you back yet? Is it okay, John, if we, or Paul, if we go ahead with the presentation without Crystal here yet?
We're gonna need her.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Paul. My question.
Can somebody call or text her?
I'll see if I can do that. I don't have her phone number.
She just texted back. She says she's almost back.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more minute.
Thank you, Marley.
You're welcome.
We try calling her again. I have a fever. I need to go back to bed.
I hope you didn't somehow get what Chris Earl has.
Yeah, it came right through the internet. It was like a virus, I guess.
The next one that's gonna get us.
That's pretty funny. Okay, Crystal is back. Okay, let's go ahead. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order from our break. And we have number five, King Unit Legalization at approximately forty, forty-two and forty-four west, five hundred north. This is number PLN PCM twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-thirty, and it's being presented by Caitlin.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you, members of the Planning Commission and the public. I'm happy to be here virtually, at least with all of you this evening. This is a special exception request, which is typically handled at the planning staff level. However, due to its complexity, planning staff has brought it to the Planning Commission for the final decision. This is to legalize third units at the building located at forty west, five hundred north, forty-two west, five hundred north, and forty-four west, five hundred north. As you can see, the subject property is located at the corner of West Capitol Street and Fifth North, and it is located in the R2 Residential Zoning District where triplex units are not permitted. The units forty west and forty-two west, five hundred north are accessed off of five hundred north, while the excess dwelling unit in question this evening is accessed off of West Capitol Street. So, you have a more detailed listing and discussion of all of the standards of approval for legalization of access dwelling units in your staff report. However, I wanted to highlight the two main ones that we are examining, at least in this presentation. And the first is that the excess unit must have been legally established. The second, which is that the excess unit must have been continuously occupied since April 12th, 1995. We were able to locate a building permit from nineteen thirty-nine, which did list three units at this address. And the property owner has provided a letter from Rocky Mountain Power that details three separate power meters that were installed on nineteen, or in nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty-five. They've also provided an affidavit from a neighbor who states that, pardon me, who states that the property has been continuously used as a triplex since the time of his residency. And the applicant has also provided a letter from the son of the previous homeowner to that same effect, and that has been uploaded to your Dropbox. So, those last two pieces of evidence would fall into the second category. But the tricky part comes to when we have conflicting pieces of evidence, which is the primary reason that staff has brought this to the Planning Commission for a final decision. So, we have the letter and the affidavit from the prior owner and the neighbor, but we also have accounts from other neighbors and Pulp directories that show the units have not been continuously occupied. We also have a Sanborn map from nineteen fifty, which indicates only two dwelling units in that building. So, I will go through some of those exhibits for you here. This is a scan of the building permits. As you can see, right under the owner there, I don't know if everyone can see my cursor, but it indicates that there are three units present. This is the Sanborn map. And as you can see, the subject property used to be one same property with the neighboring home to the north. But the subject building itself, according to the Sanborn maps, does only have those two dwelling units inside. Additionally, staff went through quite a few Pulp directories from nineteen ninety-seven through two thousand twenty-one. And we did find that the Pulp directories supported the existence of that third unit. However, we were not able to locate a year in which all three of those units were simultaneously occupied, at least as referenced in the Pulp directories. I have some site photos here, just to show you the subject property. The top left is of the front face of the building where units forty and forty-two are. And then the top right shows the front door to the unit at forty-four west, five hundred north. There is also a garage and a semi-enclosed storage space above that, shown in the bottom-left photograph. And then across the street to the south is a public park. We also have some photographs of the adjacent properties, just for, just for your reference. For the public process, we did send out an early notification to the property owners when the special exception request first came in. That was when we got the majority of the phone calls and the emails that were noted in your staff report. It was during that early notification process. We've also sent out a public hearing notice, as well as posted signs. And all of the public comments that we've received have been forwarded to the Planning Commission, either in your staff report or in the Dropbox. And at this point, just because there is conflicting evidence, staff is recommending denial. However, the property owner does have, of course, those affidavits from the prior neighbor, as well as a letter from the prior owner that he may choose to discuss with the Planning Commission. That's all I have for my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to take those. Or the homeowner, Rory, is also on the line and is able to speak.
Thank you, Caitlin. All right. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for Caitlin before we allow the homeowner to?
I do. I have a question about the standard, Caitlin. As I look at what the code says in your summary, unit legalization standards. So, I don't see that the requirement is that the unit has been continuously occupied. I see that the excess unit has been maintained as a separate dwelling unit since nineteen ninety-five. And then, in order to determine if it has been maintained, the following may be considered, which would be evidence that it has been occupied at least once every five years, evidence that it has been marketed for occupancy, and so on. So, I guess I'd like some clarification from you of what you were evaluating when sifting through the evidence.
So, what I was evaluating was really just to see how often all three of those units were occupied at the same time, since we didn't have any prior listings or prior advertisements for it to be, I guess, let as a separate property. I know that those likely existed beforehand, but neither staff nor the property owner have to date been able to locate those. So, we were heavily leaning on the ability to prove that it had been occupied consistently.
But there's not a requirement that they all three be occupied simultaneously?
Let's see.
I mean, it's quite possible that you could have them never occupied simultaneously if one is up for lease or just not currently rented out for a period of time, while the other two are and then rotates. Because I'm just trying to clarify what standard.
Yeah, what is the standard? Is the standard occupancy, or is the standard that it exists as a separate unit?
That is an excellent question. Let me hold this up.
The way I read it, and maybe Paul can clarify, it's that it's been maintained as a separate unit. And then occupancy is evidence that it has been maintained as a separate unit.
Commissioner Bell, I would agree with you that it doesn't say that they all have to be occupied simultaneously. Generally, when we have reviewed these, we've used that five-year period just to say, you know, was this use ever abandoned? Because obviously, it's become a legal non-conforming use. So, did they abandon the use of that one? And so, we've used that five-year period to determine if it hasn't been occupied at least some period of time every five years. But obviously, things happen. Not every unit needs to be occupied at the same time.
Okay. I think that. Adrian, was your question answered?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I think I interpret this provision to say that it's not an occupancy requirement. It's the creation of the unit, and occupancy is evidence of the existence of the unit. And I think that's what we should, that's where we can also take into account the affidavit and the other information that was presented by the applicant. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So, let's go ahead with the applicant. Mr. King, would you like to go ahead and speak?
Yes, I would. So, as Caitlin mentioned, I got the letter from the son of the previous owner, who he had lived in this property for many years. And he confirmed to me, I didn't know him previously, we just spoke the other day, he confirmed to me that the apartments were consistently filled. And as the other evidences show, as we were just saying, he confirms there's been different power meters. We got the letter from the power company saying that the latest one, they've been there since nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen eighty-five and nineteen eighty. So, it's been separately metered for a long time. But both the previous owner and one of the neighbors, Kelly Patterson, who knew the family pretty well, told me the exact same thing. Again, I haven't been living here, so I couldn't observe this. But to me, I figured getting that from those two people was pretty good evidence. And then, one thing I will say, the people who did give the conflicting arguments, a lot of them, it seems their concern was just parking. And one thing I want to say on that is, previously, the owner had not maintained the property very well, and the garage wasn't really usable, it was more storage. So, my plan would be to make that garage better so that it could be used, and more cars could fit on this driveway. So, it is my goal to help if that is an issue that people are worried about. In addition to that, regardless of whether it's legally a triplex or a duplex, the number of bedrooms remains the same. So, I wouldn't expect that to be an issue. But yeah, as I said, it's, I think it's pretty clear, based on everything I've been told and seen that, and it was the way it was marketed to me when I purchased the property, that these three units have been existing and rented this way for a very long time, for far more than twenty-five years.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. King at this point? Let's go ahead with a public hearing. I'm gonna open up the public hearing now. I do see one person. Who's just to speak.
I do see one. I can unmute Catherine. Catherine Anderson, would you like to speak on this topic?
Yeah, thanks. I'm here with another neighbor, Anne Hammond, and then another neighbor, Roseanne, that just had to, had to leave for a little bit. So, you're right, one of our concerns is definitely parking. Potentially, so first of all, I have, I grew up in this house and I've lived here as long as Kelly Patterson, and I would be happy to sign an affidavit saying that it has not been continuously, the third unit has not been continuously rented out. And when, at the times that it was, it was done so illegally. And the previous owner has a history of dealing with inspectors and the city on different. They were basically at war the whole time he owned this place. So that's an issue. But yes, the parking is definitely an issue right now. There is no legal parking in front of the unit on 500 North, and there is only one legal parking space on the street, on West Capitol Street. And I've been on this meeting since 5:30, and so I was listening to David Shear mention traffic issues. And we have an incredibly horrible traffic issue on West Capitol Street with parking, with people parking on both sides of the streets and people having to pull over to pass each other. And even if that dry garage were fixed up, that there's two cars there, you know, maximum. And with three units, you could potentially have six cars, which would, where would they park? I do also know that when this was first purchased and the construction was being done, I went over and talked to the contractor about some things and said, oh, you got it. You happened to get a permit fairly quickly. Oh, yes, 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 whatever. Well, it turns out, it sounds like there actually was no permit. So hence the red tag. So we do have concerns with then, you know, going ahead and condoning illegal behavior on this. And anyway, we're, we're just pretty concerned about more people, more cars, not fitting in with the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
This is. I live behind, I live on West Capitol on the same block. And I'm very concerned about the fact that it's, when I went to in and talked to the contractor, he showed me four units. And he explained how the entrances would be. There's four air conditioners. And so I'm, I'm very concerned that it's, you're trying to get a legalization for a triplex, but in actuality, it's headed to be a fourplex. And that that concerns me. I'm very concerned about the noise. And so with the potential of having, say, four couples there, maybe some kids, a lot more noise. And I'm very concerned about the parking than being all of those units spilling over into my parking in front of my house, which has always been difficult anyway. So yes, parking is a problem. And I'm also concerned about the appearance that they're making a fourplex, not a triplex anyway. And a triplex is illegal. It was meant to be a duplex in a family neighborhood. And to to go ahead and make it a triplex is not, not okay. It's like they illegally use it as a triplex from time to time. And the time I was, when I was raising my girls there, it wasn't occupied continuously as a triplex.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda, it's Marlene. Can I get the clarification of the name of the second speaker, please, for the record?
This is Anne Hammond. I own the house north of the duplex.
Thank you.
But north.
Okay. So, thank you all for speaking. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I don't see any other additional hands, and I don't have any emails.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. And a motion.
Can I just clarify this document? That it shows that it was three units. Was it, does it say September 12, 1911? Or is it scratched out? It's on page forty.
Let's see. Does that be the building permit card?
Yeah, the building permit. What year was that issue?
Looks like that was forty-one.
Oh, forty-one. See, I wasn't sure. Okay. So since the 1941, this, that building was constructed as a triplex, based on this evidence.
Yeah, we have that on the building permit card file.
I just wanted to clarify the year. Thank you.
Okay. Have there any other discussion of this item?
So just to reiterate what I stated earlier, I think the staff report is a little convoluted in the analysis of the standard and the evidence. I think it's hard to, for us to discern what we should be evaluating and sifting through it, but I defer to, you know, everyone else's opinion on this as well. To me, it seems like the, the critical piece is not whether it was occupied continuously, but whether it was established prior to 1995, and there is other evidence that it's been maintained as a separate unit, whether it's been occupied once every five years. I don't know if that's every five years from 1995 till now, I assume so. Or if it's been marketed for rent, if it hasn't met that standard, or if there's other evidence that the applicant has provided demonstrating that it has been separately maintained, or has been maintained as a separate dwelling. And I think we have that somewhat with the affidavit, as well as with the Rocky Mountain Power feed, power meters, as well as the evidence in the Pulp directories that show that there were at least three units at various times. So I don't know, I, I'm, it's hard to piece this together.
I agree with, I agree with you, Adrian. I believe that this is actually that if you put aside the continuous occupation thing, which is really a red herring, this has clearly been a separate unit for many, many, many years, much longer than 25 years. So, and I'm especially convinced by by the Rocky Mountain Power evidence of having, that's in which we determine how many units, for example, are in the cities, is how many connections there are with Rocky Mountain Power. So.
Madam Chair, can we get a legal clarification on this? Because I tend to agree with you and Adrian that the, you know, the standard is that the dwelling unit existed as a triplex. And one of the ways in which staff is going about trying to establish that is to see if it was continuously occupied, but continuous occupation of all three units does not appear as a legal standard by which we are making our decision. Can we get clarification on that?
Paul, can you speak to that issue?
But yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to lean on John and Caitlin here a little bit as far as the the standards here. Give me just a second.
So Paul, while you're looking, I have it, there's two review standards. One is the dwelling unit existed prior to April 12, 1995. So I think that we can establish that because we saw that in the building card. Second standard, so you have to meet both of these, is the excess unit has been maintained as a separate dwelling unit since April 1995. And so then it gives us those ways for somebody to prove how, to prove that it was occupied since 1995. It doesn't mean that every single day since 1995 it was occupied, but that it was consistently occupied, which is why we created that five years to say that it's consistently from since 1995 until today has generally been occupied. And my guess is that Caitlin brought this because I think they're getting some conflicting statements from neighbors who are saying it wasn't. But of course, we do have a signed affidavit from somebody who's claiming that it is, that it does meet that standard.
Right. So John, just to clarify, if we're looking at standard B under there, where it says the excess unit has been maintained as a separate dwelling unit, the following may be considered. And so I guess we're just really stuck on what's our legal, I'm stuck on, what's our legal due diligence here? In, you know, may I consider, do I feel like it's met that litmus test? I'm, I am a little confused by by where our legal standing is on, on these standards. And I'm with Adrian on this one. I think it just needs a little bit more legal clarification for me.
The, the language in the code, I'm admittedly not in love with. When it tells you that it may be considered, obviously, that's a discretionary thing. I'm not sure that that was the intent of the council when they adopted this language, that it may be considered, I think. That clearly can be tightened up. Also, the sorry, I am scrolling so slowly here. The consistently, John, where's that language?
Consistently maintained. That's a
Yeah, again, yeah, number two under that. So the excess unit has been maintained as a separate dwelling unit since April 12, 1995. So in order to determine if a unit has been maintained as a dwelling unit, the following may be considered. And I, my guess is they use may be considered because maybe somebody had evidence that, that would also, that would meet that standard that we hadn't listed, but it does give you A through D options as to how they could prove that.
So
unless those units who are actually joined together architecturally, constructively, and see how you could say it wasn't maintained as a separate unit.
And I think this is where the commission has the discretion to figure out what maintained as a separate dwelling unit.
We would have to be actually, you know, either abandoned as a unit altogether, like used for storage, or, or, or architecturally joined to another unit. So you would actually have a unit that's two stories tall or something. That would seem to me to be the, not the issue of occupancy so much.
So in the A through D gives you some, I guess, guidance as to what maintained over that period means. It's not the best language.
Thank you, Paul.
Sorry.
That's okay. Are we ready to bring this to a vote, commissioners? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll do it. I'll do it. I've got it up now. You know, these are tough, but I, parking is not on the table for us to consider. So it's really not, it's not something we legally have a purview on on this one. And I think the evidence is clear enough for me, given the, given the legal standards we have before. So based on the information in the staff report, the information presented and the input received during the public hearing, I move that the planning commission approve petition PLN PCM 2021-00030 with the following conditions. One, the applicant is required to comply with all adopted standards and ordinances. Two, the applicant will obtain all required planning and building permits prior to any remodeling or construction. And three, the applicant will obtain the required rental business license prior to renting the property.
Thank you, Amy. And I think it goes without saying that also the applicant will not be building for you. Okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second Adrian.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay, so I have a motion from Amy and a second from Adrian. So Amy?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Agree.
John?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero. So we will move on to our final final project tonight, which is the high grading special exceptions approximately 1725 South Devonshire Avenue. I'm sorry, Devonshire Drive. Case number PLN PCM 2021-00238. And Amanda? You've been waiting a long time to talk. Go for it. You're muted. Of course.
You should be unmuted now, Amanda.
Thank you. Once I share, I don't know how to get out of it.
I know, it can be difficult to find it.
The never-ending sort of online meetings. Okay. So I'll dive right in, since we've been here for a minute. I am presenting a special exception request from Matthew and Sarah DeValle. They're the property owners of 1725 South Devonshire Drive. They are requesting exceptions approval to construct a single-family home that exceeds the maximum allowable grade changes and maximum permitted building height in the FR2 21,780 Foothills Residential District. The requested grade changes exceed the allowed six feet in the buildable area and four feet in the rear yard area. The applicant is also requesting to exceed the FR2 zoning district's permitted building height of 28 feet, which is measured from established grade. The planning commission has final decision-making authority for building height in the FR2 district. The subject property is lot number two within the Devonshire subdivision, which was recorded in 1991. It will be lot number 10 of 12 to be developed. The setbacks, buildable area, and undevelopable area are all prescribed on the plot. The lot is about 50,000 square feet with a buildable area of 5,700 square feet, which is about 11% of the lot area. The proposed single-family dwelling would encompass approximately 6% of the total lot area. And then as for site conditions, the grade increases by 30 feet from the front yard setback to the undevelopable area, and that's an increase of about 31%. Here's some photos of the subject property to show the existing slope and the increase in the, in the slope. The grade change along the east side of Devonshire Drive slips upward towards the foothills, and then the established grade slips downward on the west side of the street. The subject property is located on the, on the east side. Due to the existing slope, special exceptions for grading and building height have been approved for other properties within this subdivision and also the surrounding neighborhood in the FR2, or in the FR zoning districts. I took photos of the homes within this specific subdivision to show the development pattern. Here's a site plan of the proposed residence and proposed grading changes. The grade changes are requested in order, in order to create a buildable area for a portion of the driveway pad and as well as a rear yard patio. The grade exceeding six feet within the buildable area are illustrated in purple along the front elevation and at the rear of the home. And the grade changes exceeding four feet in height are shown in yellow, and they're located in the rear yard as well. This is a site section showing the proposed grading on the driveway, which is next to the garage. The area that exceeds six feet is hashed in purple and is against the garage wall. The total cut is just seven and a half feet in that portion. And then the second location where's grading special exception is being requested is within the rear yard area. The established grade increases by approximately 11 feet behind the rear facade. The proposed cut and fill are requested to accommodate two retaining walls, which will create a level area for the patio. Approximately six feet of each retaining wall will be exposed. So the first cut, which is in the buildable area, is about seven and a half feet as well. And then the second cut is right outside of the buildable area and is five feet, two inches. There's a five-foot landscaped area separating the two retaining walls as required in code. The patio and the retaining walls will not be visible from the public right-of-way. and the applicant can't submit a site visibility study, which is included in the staff report. The second request is for additional building height. The FR2 zoning district permits a building height of 28 feet from established grade. The applicant is requesting additional building height to accommodate a section of the street-facing elevation. The established grade of the property flattens out right below this area. And it was also illustrated in a site section located in the staff report. So because of this, they're requesting approximately two to three feet on a 185 square foot portion of the roof. The overheight section of the roof is step back, as, as is the whole design of the building. But this portion is stepped back from the front line of the building by about 25 feet and is also not visible from Devonshire Drive. And there's a site visibility study in the staff report, that the architect included. The public process, a hearing notice was mailed and posted on the city and state websites on the 28th, May 28th. And then I posted a sign on the property on the 31st. I didn't receive any public comments prior to publishing the staff report. But since then, I've received two comments in support of the proposal, and they were uploaded into the Dropbox. And planning staff recommends that the planning commission approve the request based on the information in the staff report. The request for special exceptions for grade changes and additional building height in the FR2 zoning district. Well, let me try that again. Planning staff recommends the planning commission approve the special exception request for grade changes and additional building height at 1725 South Devonshire Drive, based on the information in the staff report. Thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Amanda. It's late. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Amanda at this time? If not, we will move on to see if the applicant would like to speak.
I would love to speak.
Go right ahead.
Okay, this is Sarah DeValle, and I'm here with my husband, Matt. And I so appreciate the, the time, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I know that the hour is getting long, so I will get right to it. This is lot number two, and I purchased it back in 2006. And at the time, it was the largest single investment I ever made in anticipation of building this dream home. When I made that investment, I drove around Devonshire and saw homes in all shapes and sizes. And so the height requirements and the slope challenge really didn't fully sink in. In the last 15 years, the planning commission has reached out to us for supportive exceptions on lots 13 across the street and lots six and seven down the street. And in each of those conversations, we gave our support, but we also became more aware of the planning challenges. We kicked this project off last summer, and we built a very respected team of architects and builders to do this the right way and to respect the planning code. And it has been a bit of a Rubik's Cube to design because of the, the L-shaped pad, the steep grade, and the 20-foot setback. As Amanda shared in her write-up, we are closing in on 30 iterations of the plans because we very much want to respect the code. And we've worked hard to present a version that we hope respects both the rules and the spirit of those rules and minimizes exceptions. The style of the home is very much in keeping with the area of the homes on lots three, six, seven, and 13 directly across the street. May I share my screen?
Yes, you may. But you only have about six more minutes to speak.
Okay. Well, then I, I'm not going to fight with the technology. I'm just going to reference the, the pages in your document.
That would be great.
Yeah, page 17 shows the front height exception. And that is limited to that, that top section facing west. And as Amanda noted, it's not visible to somebody standing in the street in front of the house. This particular area has really made us rip our hair out a little bit because the natural grade of the lot flattens out at that point. And so the, the 28-foot envelope also flattens out right there where that, that refined cops out. So that has been a challenge, and we have done our best to minimize that as much as we can. The, Amanda noted that modest grading exception to create the flat driveway in the garage area. The back patio grading challenge is the third exception. And really, the least expensive approach there is to have one 11-foot wall, but that is not aesthetically pleasing, and it really creates a very large grade exception. So the, the team worked hard to design those two walls divided by five feet, as well as we did the landscaping plan that was requested to make it more in keeping with the surroundings. Again, this feature is not visible from the street from any angle. And so the only people who could possibly see this are the neighbors to the south, the Whitbees. We've shared our house plans and the landscaping plans with the Whitbees, and they are in full support of it. And I believe that is one of the letters that came in to document their support.
Yes.
So that's really the long and short of it, and we very respectfully ask for approval on these exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeValle. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant or for staff at this point? If not, we'll move on to the public hearing. Open up the public hearing fee. If you wish to speak on this particular issue, please push the little raise hand button in the corner, right-hand corner of, lower right-hand corner of your screen.
Madam Chair, I do not see anybody from the attendee list, and we have not received any emails this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to note that we do have two letters that have been received. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and a possible motion.
Madam Chair, there's no discussion. I'm ready to make a motion.
I believe that, would anyone like to talk about this one? Amy, please.
I would just say, Mr. DeValle, your hard work has paid off in a, in a good proposal that really doesn't raise any red flags with me. So it was worth it, I guess, just to tell you that. Based on the information listed in the staff report, the information presented and the input received during the public hearing, I move that the commission approve the special exception request for grading and additional building height at 1725 South Devonshire Drive as presented in petition PLN PCM 2021-00238.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to take a second from Carolyn in this case. So we have a motion from Amy, a second from Carolyn. Amy?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Agree.
John?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And I believe that unless there is some other business before the commission, we shall stand adjourned until next time. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thanks.